If we could just listen up, please. Thank you.
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Okay, so before we have a regular first month, but before we start with that, I'd like to have everyone please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women who sacrificed their lives to give us the opportunity to serve our country and our town. Thank you.
Okay. So we still got some people coming in. We do have some seats in the back corner when you come in. There's more chairs. I think there's a few empty seats.
I don't think I know.
So the public hearing is going to continue through to 2015. This is for the town of Marlboro, also County District, which provides a chapter 155 zoning of the county's files of the section 155-1 terms of additional permitted accessory use to section 155-12B, R1 residential district, and an additional permitted accessory use to section 155-12C, RAG1 rural agricultural district, and section 155-32.6 detached accessory dwelling is on a single-family property. So this sentence really explains that detached accessory dwelling on a single-family property that's typically called an ADU unit. For, it's great that we have a lot of people here tonight because I could actually explain this a little better. It is a detached, or couldn't be untouched, property on your one-acre lot. So if you have a house right now, it's on a one-acre lot. What we're trying to do is to get more housing in the county because there's a housing shortage in New York State and especially in Ulster County. And some of this is caused by all the Airbnbs that are popping up. They're taking away from rentals and stuff of that nature. So the county and the towns and municipalities have been trying to work on ways to get more housing. And one of the ways is to allow ADU units on your one-acre parcel. You could build, we're proposing here is to add, you could have an 100 square foot ADU unit on your one-acre property. You wouldn't have to go through the full planning board process. It's basically goes through the building department. You fill out your application as long as you fit all the requirements that we're going to add into this code. And the biggest part of it is you have to have a one acre. And secondly, you've got to meet all the health approvals. Obviously, when your house was, it probably was built for either a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom house. Your septic was built to that spec. When you're going to add another 900 square feet to your house and maybe you're adding two bedrooms and a bath, your septic may not be capable of handling that. So you may have to build an additional septic or you could see if you can upgrade your current septic. Those in just these codes, as you see here, different sections of the code, R1 residential, RAG1, different sections of the code instead of just blanketly across like C1, the hamlets and stuff like that. Because mostly C1 and hamlets, they don't have one-acre lots. So typically, we wouldn't see that this would be available there. But there are a few. So what's on the cards we haven't gotten back, just so you know, is to open it up to pretty much all the different areas in the community. But the biggest requirement is one acre. You could have 10 acres and you can do this, but it would still have to be within that 10 acres. Literally, you can, if you so chose, you could subdivide that off your property. If you had enough property, again, you have to have at least one acre to subdivide an additional property, meaning you would have to have at least two, two and a half acres to do that. If you sold the house, it can go with the house. It can be converted back to say you had a garage originally. Now you want to bring it back to the garage, it could be converted back. So there's different options here to get some housing. The thing for this is like, as everybody knows, it's very expensive right now for housing. And all the children that we have, or even elderly parents can't afford their houses anymore. And this is hopefully giving them the option to say either my children can live in this ADU until they can get enough money to really get their own home. Or maybe it's the reverse and the children are going to take over the main house and the parents want to downsize to a smaller house. That's part of it. But you could also then use it for rental purposes. So now that I explained all that, does anybody have any comments that they want to make on the code change that we're going to be making? Mickey, come on up.
Mickey Simonowski, Marlboro, New York. I think this is a great code, but I do have a general comment. In H prohibition six, it states no detached ADU may be partitioned off, sold, or separated from the lot which contains the principal dwelling unit unless the subdivided lots are both in conformance with the minimum acreage and setback requirements of the underlying zoning district. If the parcel has never been subdivided, this wording implies that a subdivision has already taken place, as I read it. It doesn't state that a subdivision would be required and that the plan has to be approved with both lots in conformance with the minimum acreage and separate requirements of the underlying zoning district. So I'm just questioning, should the wording be clarified to instruct that for future needs? The Ulster County ADU model also included a section on fees. Perhaps fees are handled elsewhere in the full code and certainly in our fee schedule, but I noted that in the comparison to the model. And then the second is request. Yesterday, we were reviewing with my committee number the points available to obtain Climate Smart Community Bronze Certification. And we noted that we can get points for having ADU zoning. I have not had enough time to determine exactly what needs to be included to be able to learn, earn those points. So I'm just asking that this public hearing remain open one more meeting's time so that I can gather that information and report back to you in a timely fashion if there would be any necessary items to be included in the draft. I do not think there would be, but I don't feel that waiting an additional two weeks to be able to pass the resolution will be a deciding factor whether or not one person wants to build an ADU. And I don't know, has the building inspector received any inquiries about the ADU to date? I will be prompt in giving you this information. And thank you.
Thanks, Mickey. Can you just email me what you have there also? And yeah, we're probably going to leave it open only because I still haven't got back to county.
That's right.
Comments, even though technically it's past 30 days, we can close it. But you know, like I told everybody from the beginning, we want to get this right from the beginning. So you know, it's not a big deal to keep it open. We're not in a tremendous rush. I do want to get this out there into the public so the public could start taking advantage of this.
Absolutely.
Because it's something I think quite a few people are going to be using. But yeah, just send me that and then we're going to, you know, I'm not going to ask to close it tonight. So.
Thank you.
We're already good there. Yep, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, so we're going to keep the public hearing open on ADU for the next meeting. I probably will definitely likely ask the board to close that at the next meeting because I shall have the county comments back by then.
Do we have feedback from our own planning board?
Yeah, I'm going to read that right now. So I do have comments back from them because I went to their board meeting the other night and they did send me their comments. So they were, they were also in, very much in favor of this. So the planning board reviewed this and discussed the proposed local law at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 6, 2025. The planning board agrees with the concept of the proposed amendment to the code to allow detached accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in the R1 residential district and the RAG1 rural agricultural district. Considering the importance of the need for low-cost residential development in the town of Marlboro, the planning board urges the town board to consider expanding proposed local law to allow the detached ADUs used as permitted accessory use in other zoning districts in the town appropriate and with respect to objectives, goals, and comprehensive plan. Should you have any other further questions, please feel free to contact me. And that's Chris Brand, planning board chairman. So they kind of said the same thing, that they think we should open it up to other districts. But pretty much that was the only thing that they were asking us to look into. So waiting to see back at the counties has to say, I think the county probably is going to be on the same page with them on this too because the county is the one that's really, really pushing us to do this. But we'll see what they say and then we'll go from there. So, okay. So now we're going to get to our regular first month of the month, which is today, October 14th at seven o'clock here. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the September 22nd, 2025 town board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 22nd, sorry, town board meeting.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Motion to approve the minutes from the September 22nd, 2025 public hearing on the MS4.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September 22nd, 2025, public hearing, MS4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. I need authorization to pay the bills of $372,790.92.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills of $372,790.92.
A second.
You guys are fighting over seconds tonight.
You're faster than me today, Manny.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any comments just on the agenda? And this isn't public comments. This is just comments on the agenda. If you see anything on the agenda you don't agree with or disagree with, normally we don't have too many on that. Reports of departments, so reports of departments, our board members have gotten all the reports of the departments. Would you have any questions for any of our department heads that may be here tonight? But from this perspective, the town board gets a monthly report from every department head. What has happened through that month? What ways they expanded towards budget? How many complaints were put in? How many arrests were made? The highway department puts in their report as far as what they've done through the month. The water department puts in what they've done through the month. And we look through those. Years ago, we used to read every single one of these. It just seems to be a long process to do that. But these are always on our website. So if anybody out there ever wants to look at them, you could go right on our website, look at our minutes, and you will see all these reports. It tells you all the gallons of super plants are used, any kind of information that you want is here. So does anybody have any questions on any of this from our board?
I wouldn't say questions, but I would just thank the highway department. There seems like it was a very busy month with some ancillary projects that were being done at the town park, including the new fire pit, the Gaga ball pit being relocated, the concrete pad and the garage that were installed to improve the fields up top. Just, you know, a lot of above and beyond work by that team. So thank you to everybody in the highway department.
I agree. That leads me into my presentation though, Sherida. Since I thought we might have a big audience tonight, I figured tonight might be a good night to show everybody what the town has been doing for the past year, up to this point. There's been a lot of things that have happened. Before I get, a lot of people are here for specific reasons, things that were put out in the public and address myself in this matter. I know the article was put out there which says that I was in a corrupt scheme with a person of, in our developer within our community. If anybody knows me, this has got to be the most furthest thing from the truth that ever out there. Yes, was there an email sent to his general manager? Yes. Do I have my receipt with the invoice that I paid? Yes. What the general manager says and what the owner says are two different things. I'm going to tell you, every developer, anybody that comes in my offices that's going to do any business in the town of Marlboro, the first thing I tell them is I'm not here for any of these pay-to-play schemes. I'm not here for any of these quick pro quotes. If I'm going to go out, I'm paying for what I have to pay for. And I tell you, it's kind of hard. I've been doing this for a long time now, 14 years, with being on the board 10 years as a board member. And I've been honored to be the supervisor for four years. It's kind of sad that I can't go out in the public a lot and go to establishments because yes, people do want to buy me a drink or buy this for me. So I don't do it because I don't want to put myself in that situation. What I do is I buy ahead of time and I have to come home and eat it because I do want to support our local establishments. But that's where it comes to. I make sure I don't put myself in those situations. So to be accused of this really, really hurts me tremendously. And I really, I really feel for this board because we're doing a lot of great things here and this is such a distraction to us. And I really, really hate that. And on Friday, when this, after this article came out, I had every single person that was in the town hall that day in my office. We had a meeting. I discussed this with them directly. I apologized to every single one of them for me supposedly having to have anything to do with this and putting our town hall in jeopardy as saying that we're a corrupt town. That is furthest from the truth that you could ever say about this town. We are doing a lot of great things and I would hate to see those things stop because of, you know, anybody having a personal thing against one person or two people, whatever it may be. And everybody has the right to their opinion and everybody has the right to say what they want to say. You know, do I do everything right? Hundred percent not. I make a lot of mistakes, but I also learn from my mistakes and I take accountability for my mistakes. If I'm the person that's in head of this town, then I take the good with the bad. And when the bad comes, I face it. And I'm facing you tonight. I will tell you, yes, again, was there an email sent to Mr. Wilson? Yes. Did I pay a bill that they sent me? Yes. I have my invoice. I have my bank statements. I have nothing to hide. Okay? As far as the personnel matter, which is with my brother, I know a lot of people are here for that. I recuse myself from anything to do with that. I've got emails from different people wanting this. I put my deputy supervisor, Gail Appeler, in charge of that. And the board members here with the lead of councilwoman Sessa on that. I know there's been a lot of things out there about hiring attorneys tonight. And why are we hiring attorneys? Most of these attorneys are being hired for different reasons. One of them is for a suit that we've been going on for two or three years now with the person within the town, and we need extra counsel to do so. Trust me, it's the worst thing I ever want to do. Everybody up here does not want to hire attorneys. These people get paid $200 to $400 an hour and some of them, sometimes we have to use two or three people to collect data. It's throwing money away. Okay? I just signed a check today for one of them for $21,000 over a matter that should have been resolved two years ago. Okay? But we have to do it. We're protecting you as the taxpayers, okay? And the personnel, is it being hired? Yes. Is it being hired because of actions that are going on? A hundred percent. But it's not for the person, it's for the town. The town has to be protected and we have to get information back from that attorney, not me because I'm not involved. They got to give guidance to these, to these board members on what decisions they want to make. It's not, it's not hired for that person. It's hired for the town's protection because that person also has attorneys. And that person, if for some reason the board made a decision that wasn't right, can sue the town. And then the town needs a personnel attorney to advise them. Okay? So I'm just trying to put it all out there. I never have anything to hide. I'm the most transparent person you'll see. In the four years I've been supervisor, what have we had? Two executive sessions, maybe? We do it in the public. I do it in the public eye. I don't try to hide anything. All right? So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of public comments tonight. Anything that pertains to, say, my family member, these board members will have the answers for you. I take myself out of the picture. Okay? Even when I've already dealt with situations that come up within town, the liaisons for that are Eddie and Manny for that department, not me. They handle those matters. I don't, I don't handle those matters. Okay? Do I have to talk to the building department in my function as supervisor? A hundred percent. If I didn't talk to the code enforcement officer in the building department, we'd never get anything accomplished in this town. You have to talk to them. All right? That's, and you also understand, when the letter that was sent to the group that, the Facebook page, I made that decision, was paid, that was the only thing the town paid for. Okay? Was it maybe a mistake? I will say yes. I probably shouldn't have done that. And I own that mistake. Okay? And I apologize for that mistake if I made a mistake. But it was one letter. There was never going to be a follow-up to that letter, trust me. And anything after that, the employee himself is paying for. Okay? I made that clear. I made that clear to the attorney and that was it. So you can't really say much more about that, but what I'm telling you is there's more than one person that works in the building department. Okay? I have a new person in there that's been working in there over a year, Mr. Drake. Okay? So when people say building department, I know you're thinking about one person, but I take it as a supervisor, as the building department. There's three people that work in there. Okay? I have a young man who's 21 years old, trying to help his town out and get trained to be a building and code enforcement officer for this town. He's looking at this stuff right now. He's saying, are you kidding me? Why would I take this job? Why would I stay here? Right? I've got the most honest person you could ever meet in the world, Penny Cashman, who works in there, who is the most unbelievable person you'll ever meet. Okay? My brother is a very kind-hearted person. He's in a position that yes, can piss a lot of people off because he does things and his position that people sometimes don't like as far as code enforcement. I don't know how he's ever done it for as long. But I'm not going to say any more about that because that's on the board. But I do, I just want to put that out there. If you ever have anything you want to talk to me about, look, call me, email me, come to my office. I'm always available. Right, Tammy? Saturdays, middle of the night, 10 o'clock, text me, email me. I'm going to get back to you. But I'm always available. So call me. Because when you hear things in papers, you're only getting one side of a story sometimes. And there is another side to the story. I can only talk for myself and that's what I'm talking for, for myself. And myself, I could tell you what I did and the rest of it, that'll have to be worked out. But that's me. I know what I did. And I'm definitely not no corrupt politician, I can tell you that. All right? So let's leave it at that. What we're talking about is accomplishments because that's what we concentrate on. For the last eight weeks, my concentration has been on the budget. All right? For you. All this other stuff has been like, I didn't even look at it because I have so much stuff on my mind. When we started the budget with these, with these people up here and my great budget officer, Christina, we were over $600,000 above the cap this year. 600. That's a big number to try to get down and stand there at 2% cap so I don't have to raise your taxes. But I could tell you, as of today, we're $3,000 under the cap. That doesn't happen overnight. I took eight weeks of crunching numbers, going through, talking to every department head, saying where they can cut, where they can give back, what they cannot, what they can give up for this year so we don't have to raise taxes. I want to thank here, there's a lot of department heads here tonight, all the work that they did for you. You should give them a round of applause because $600,000 in a small town is a lot of money to try to make up. But we did it. And we've done it every year. I worked on the budget for 14 years and I've never been over the 2% cap and I'm proud of that. It's not easy because I could tell you, the state keeps mandating more and more and more stuff on us. This year was 22% increase in pension contributions. 22%. It's getting more and more. Healthcare, 10% every year. It's a lot.
22%.
22% was for just for pension contributions. So I just want to thank them. But let me get to a slideshow. Oh, it went out over there, huh? I'm talking too much. I do thank everybody for coming because you know why? That means you're listening out there. You are getting involved. And you know, normally we have five people at our meetings. So I always usually take that as, I always joke at everybody to say, that means we must be doing something right because no one's here. Jerry, is that thing unplugged because I don't see it lit up? There we go. See what we got to use so we don't have to spend your tax dollars? I had to personally go buy that for $29 so we could have wireless. But let's see here. Come on, come on up. The chief actually, you know, he's kind of like my IT guy. It's, you know, he has dual roles too. So him and Gary, Gary here tonight? Where's Gary? He's another, he's my other IT guy. I need your IT help, guys. Now I'm not connecting. What the heck? Oh, here we go. Here we go. There we go. Thank goodness. All right. On the beginning of the year, I don't know if you guys know, it took a long time because of insurance, but the North Pier caught on fire and burnt down. Kind of crazy. So if you're around on the dock, please don't smoke. Okay? If you're going to smoke, please throw it into the river, not on the dock. Okay? This is how this burnt down. But you want to make something that's a negative into a positive. Well, we made a positive because this insurance company now had to make it up to code and they built this beautiful new ADA compliant, which we didn't have prior. So this is just some of the pictures of it. All the insurance money. So it didn't cost you any extra. Thanks to our councilmember Sessa who pushed us. She wanted lights on our new acquired Youngs Field that was donated by the Aldridge family. Legislature Corcoran was able to get us a matching grant from the county which paid $100,000 towards this project. So these were when the polls were delivered. There's got to be bocce guys out there and bocce ladies out there right now, but to push and push and push that we build another court. Dave Councilman and people helped out quite a bit. Deputy Supervisor Appeler, I think, helped out and the guys and people in the bocce league really helped out get this up. Out of this picture because this is in front of the community center and this is the beginning of the year. I have a meeting with every single person in the town hall. And if people want to know, I'm from an IBM background. That's what I tried to bring to the town is like a little professionalism, how you run the town. And what I do is like have everybody involved. So at the beginning of the year, I have a meeting with everybody. This is the picture we had of, I was going to show you, these are the things we talked about. What are we going to do this year? How are we going to accomplishment? Who's going to take the lead? Who's going to do this? Who's going to do that? And do you have any other ideas? And is there any other things that we can do? And this was the picture that we took in front of there. So this is the highway department had a house for many months as they were building it and we were doing their, their site over. They were living out of their garage, literally. These are the footprints on the back of where Charlie, the water department, got his new garage. This is the ground baking facility with GPH, who's our engineering firm. So that was a pretty good day. This is the office off John's new office that you see. You can see like our highway guys were working with them. The highway department, I could tell you probably saved us, I don't know, $300,000 to $500,000 by doing the work with the contractor. You can't even estimate how much money they saved you. They did all the demo work inside. They did a lot of work to help get this project They did a lot of work to help get this project complete. You can see the parking lot that was put outside in the stripe. David, this day, up at the cemetery fixing, I want to fix something, or I want to help something, and do you have anybody that can help? I'm sure, sure, Dave can help. So I always volunteer, Dave. And Tom Schroeter wanted to fix one of the fallen stones at Quaker Cemetery, and Dave went up there and helped all day, and he actually cleared a better path for it, so. There's more pictures of this. That was the big router that was used to drill out the holes for the lights at the park. There's the one that the first pole went in. This is our new truck that we budgeted for. These trucks take, what, John, two years to get now? So, very expensive, three years for that one. So yeah, it's getting very costly, but they take a long time, so we budgeted for it. We don't have to finance, which is good. This was the back. This was all the interior, we're demo work. I mean, we started taking the ceiling and stuff down, they still had the old light fixtures in the ceiling and stuff, they never really took them out when they did it. It's kind of funny how you found, how we found things as they were doing it. This was where the old supervisor's office, assessor's office, now a big room for the guys to use for all their storage. This was St. Patrick's Day, I believe, dinner that we had with the Lions Club that we co-host with them and the seniors. There's our guy, Tom Schroeter, he was the first Citizen of the Year this year, and we presented him with his plaque, which we will be putting out, I think, next meeting for everybody, so I'm glad everybody's here too. This is a good opportunity. Every year, we're going to have a Citizen of the Year, so we'll be putting it out on our website, probably starting next month, or end of this month, and you can nominate who you believe is the Citizen of the Year of Marlborough. And then the board members will take all those in, and we will take a vote on what we believe is probably the best Citizen of Marlborough. There's a lot of them, so it's hard to... But Tom definitely deserved to be the first one. This guy is a legend, so he's done a lot for our community, and he still does. He still does. You'll see the park all the time. If you ever go to the park, you'll see Tom.
Scott, if I could comment, quick comment. There were so many applicants last year. So, if the applicants last year, they were wonderful applicants. If they want to reapply, please do. But just, you know, we'll take the same essay, it's a 500-word essay, and definitely get everybody involved.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's hard to choose, because there's so many good people, so.
It's an awesome program.
What's that?
Awesome program.
Oh yeah. As you can see, we got a lot of pictures of the highway. This was the picture I took. I remember it gets cold down in the winter, down to the, down that pier, but I always loved that these ice fixtures, and they come up and they pop out of the ground. It's like, it's an awesome picture, so. And I don't know if anybody ever saw this, you know, this was done by Jerry Starpoley, the late Jerry Starpoley. We redid this train station, you know, Deputy Supervisor Lanzetta really wanted this to be genuine, and we all agreed. And he cut these things out individually, so you could see how that light shines on the train station. It's really, some don't see too much anymore in buildings. More of these pictures. Mary Beth King, there's your donated garage. So this is the dome park, Mary Beth King, this past year donated this garage to us, which we thought was in better shape, to be honest with you, Mary Beth, but as you could see, we might have started from scratch here, but... The highway guys have had a time when there's like, you know, John is like me, a little old school, like, we don't like to see people not work. We like to see the guys work for you guys. And so, when they're done with the snow, and it's freezing, and they can't do other stuff, they do things like this in the middle of the winter. And so, this is what they did. They ripped this thing apart, and they're starting to rebuild it. I mean, you'll see it later on, they're starting to rebuild. This is something that my deputy supervisor volunteered to do for our office, so we actually have now a real pass-through, so Tina can have the water bills paid to her, which we all hate to pay, including myself. Charlie took these pictures with his drone, to give you some aerial view of our lot. This is where the mobile life people are sitting.
Can't call them mobile life anymore.
I call them mobile life, that's ambulance, you're right. This is a desperate repair of a new shed, which we budgeted for this year, so of course the highway department was gracious enough to help put it in. I know Julie was very happy. I can tell you, the highway department, if you go, this is the old one, I believe, right here, look how bad it looks. I don't know, was this the one they took and they used as the pump house up at the highway department? They redid it. So, reuse, recycle, as I say. They continue to amaze me. If you go to 9W, you'll see this old ratty thing looks pretty nice in front of the highway department now. This is, I go pretty much at least once a month to the seniors and get their perspectives. I like to...
The seniors now meeting the new community center?
Yep. They're meeting the new community center, from what I hear, they love it. So, you know, I get a lot of great feedback from them, and so I like to go talk to them. I'm old school, I like to talk to people. This is the actual, I don't know if anybody, a lot of people didn't, weren't able to make the public opening of this, but this is the new garage in the back for the water department that they desperately needed. As you see, we mimic the look of the community center. This is them building the new, this is in timeframe, as the time went by, I kept taking pictures of things happening. This is the new Bachi court. Building, bad thing. Dave's out there raking, you know, helping out. Not that Dave, the Dave at a highway day. This is Sharada's, this is your snack shack at the Youngs Field. So again, Youngs Field is now owned by the town of Marlborough, thanks to the Aldridge family and the Air Condition Union. The highway guys came down, and John, and everybody, and they pretty much tried to fix up the field around the whole perimeter. These are things that they, you know, that people don't see that they do every day. There's so many little things that they do every day, and that's why I like to point them out. You know, HVAC, more aerials. This is another thing they did. So the kayak launch, I don't know if everybody knows, down at the landing, we have a kayak launch, which was through a grant. And the river's so rough, it actually snapped the welds right off. And instead of us having to go out and get it repaired, our highway guys pulled it out of the water. And we have in-house guys that know how to weld very well, and we got ahold of the manufacturer, and they shipped us all the parts for no cost, and they fixed it themselves and got it back in the water, and now it's operational. This is their office, the new highway department office. This is their new break room area. Our rec committee, our unbelievable rec committee. Oh, it's frozen up there, huh? Let me hit refresh. Don't like it. Trust me, everybody, I'll get through this. That's weird. Jerry, that thing I hit did it again. Still frozen. Jerry, unplug that. That's weird. Yeah, just unplug it and plug it back in. Just when I was getting to the rec committee, so, let me just read you some of the stuff. So we did bid out this year, they awarded the contract for the Marlborough sewer plant. We got $500,000 grant from the county through Legislature Corcoran, and we got almost $900,000 in contributions from two developers, and ARAP money from the federal government of $900,000. So, a lot of this upgrade to the sewer plant is being paid for by grants, which is great, so the water and sewer district doesn't have to pay for it. Of course, we completed the highway department building, we got a $250,000 grant from Assemblyman Jacobson, and a $200,000 grant from Senator Henchy. And on the 22nd of this month, they will both be down here at 1:00, and we will have an official grand opening at the highway department, so that's coming up next week, I believe, somewhere a couple of weeks. We completed the Bachi court, we completed the upgrades at Youngs Park, we put the lights on at Youngs Park, and that was through granting. We completed the repairs at North Pier, completed the repairs at the kayak launch. Recreation Committee had a successful Easter egg hunt at the dome. We want to thank the Pisa family for always donating the dome to us, and what the rec committee does, they put off a great event up there. Completed repairs at Sands Avenue Dog Park, mulching was completed, fencing repairs were completed, landscaping was completed. We worked with Margot this year to do the apple parade. I hope everybody was able to see all the apples around town. They just auctioned a bunch of them off this past weekend. They did a great job. Margot is the arts, Marlborough Arts organization, and we support them 100%. Councilman Zambito completed the repairs on the walkway stairs that go down to the train station. We have a, hang on, I wish I could get this up. We have an unbelievable Milton landing, and we have a great walkway that goes down there. And we had a couple of bad storms last year, and into this year, that destroyed the walkway, so Dave took it upon himself, as usually, to go up there and fix them. So again, we did the Easter hunt. There's the rec committee, like, these guys, these are the main people. Oh gosh, I may have even passed them. Gosh, I want to give them credit, because look, you should give these guys a hand, give them a hand, they do a great job. They do this all volunteer, and I don't know, sometimes they probably are like, you know, butting heads, but at the end of the day, they get it done. It's not easy. But I wanted to get to... So, oh look, see, your garage is getting there, Mary Beth, it's getting there. It's looking good, see? There's, this is what I was talking about, the mulch. Councilman Zambito went down and fixed this up. Deputy Supervisor Appler fixed the fence. You know, what you guys, I'm glad you're here tonight, because I mean, I'll tell you what, you don't realize how many talented people that work for you, and how many things they do above and beyond what you elected them for, or what we hired them for. You know, I just ask, and I don't know why, they always say yes, but I'll keep asking, but they do a lot of good things. Here's the apple parade, some of the apples. We also did accommodation awards for Bruce McRath and Joe Kovacs this year. 60 and 50 years of service to the Milton Engine Company. I mean, gosh. I mean, that's 60 years, that's more than I've been alive, and it's unbelievable. And they still do stuff with the Milton Engine, they still are active, and it's crazy, so. This was the donation ceremony at the Youngs Park, and I want to thank the Aldridge family and the Youngs family for donating this, because now this park will be here forever, because now it's owned by the town. You know, if it's owned by an individual family, sometimes some family members might say, "I want to sell that." And I made many, many memories on this field, personally myself, and then with my own kids. And I know you do it yourself now, so it's great that we do have this now. The apple parade again. Oh, this is the John's office now, and Gary's. This is nicer now, huh? The floors, bathrooms, aerial view of our beautiful park. That's their actual office now, as they sit. This was the semi-annual opening that we had, that we had a little ribbon-cutting ceremony with our engineering firm, GPI. They were complete, so we did this little ceremony, so. And we did the sewer broke in the back, so that's a nice picture there. The water department, what did they do? Didn't skip a beat. They went and dug it up, got all the parts, and fixed the whole thing in-house. Totally done within two days. Here's what I was talking about, at the park. This is going down the walkway into the river, and we have this beautiful walkway, and it was all washed out through rainfall, and they went up there and did a tremendous amount of work to get it fixed. Here's our recreation committee again, putting their flowers in the middle of town. You know, they're always decorating the hampers, getting donations, beautifying our town. We have a beautiful town, and no one should forget that. We have a beautiful town. Walkway pictures again. Blacktop season, everybody knows we have blacktop season, and our guys work hard. The one that first started was the Phyllis Inn, right Dave, the first time? Because we'll get to what happened after that, because he had to do it a second time. But...
It froze again.
It froze again. Oh God. Oh, and I just got to a great picture too. Anyway, I don't want to keep everybody, because we'll be here all night. But I just wanted to tell everybody that we are, we did finish the Buckley Bridge. I don't know if anybody knows about that. The Buckley Bridge, two years ago, was damaged. That's an historical bridge in our town. And it was unfortunately damaged by someone who hit it, who lost their lives. And when that happens, it becomes an insurance claim that takes a lot longer than you would imagine, because it's an insurance claim for a death. We worked with our highway department, Lenny Cattor, who helps us out on a lot of these things, and we were able to get it done within budget, within the insurance money, and it didn't cost you, and it came out beautiful, so I wanted to show you that. If you ever go by Buckley Bridge, go check it out. You see the pickleball park, it started down, and we budgeted for that this past year. That's going, include Shance Park. The reason I haven't seen any progress as of late is because the fencing company told us they were backed up by eight weeks, which is crazy. So we went to the secondary one, they told us the same thing. So, I'm not 100% sure we're going to get the pickleball court completed this year. It's budgeted for, but if anything, it's going to be done in the spring, because we can't put the blacktop in there until we actually get the fence post in. So that's what's holding us up there. We awarded a contract for solar panels on the east side of the community center. I don't know if everybody understands, the community center is a very expensive endeavor for us to maintain now that we have it fully on the books this year. Anybody take a guess how much the electric cost is every single month there? Take a guess. You know back there. $3,000, right Chris? Minimum, $3,000 just for electric. So, we did get a $200,000 grant through the legislator, again, Legislature Corcoran was able to get a $200,000 grant up there. The county has also got ARP money, that's where they're getting a lot of this grant money that they have to give out. And we are going to try to get solar on there to help us with our electric bills. And you can see that the CAC worked on getting the charging stations in. I know Mickey was very vocal in getting this done. I thought, you know, the town board gave the CAC like a probably, you would think, a task that no one could actually do, is we said, "We'll do these solar or EV charging stations, but we don't want the taxpayer to pay a dime, and they got to be fast charging stations, and you got to get DOT approval." And Mickey founded a company called Linkwell, that said, "Yes, we have grants that we can get it fully funded." And Central Hudson helped fund some of that with that, and they got the DOT approval to give a road cut. And the reason it is where it is, is, I know that was a lot of discussion, is you have to have three-phase electric to get these charging stations operational. There's nowhere inside the park, because that's where we originally wanted to put it, that can have three-phase electric unless we ran three-phase into it, and that would cost a lot of money. The only spot that had it is along 9W, and they figured the southern end there was the easiest run, and that's why they chose it. And again, being in the park, the thought was, if you go in the park and you're charging now, you could get out of your car and walk around and see the, you know, walk around the park. So, that's why that was there. So, good job by me. So good job by me. So again, we have a lot of other things we did, but I'm not going to keep you guys here all night. So let's try to get this working again, chief. When I go back to the pictures, it'll be fine. It's when you add the pictures. And I apologize for this. But the reason we mentioned this tonight too is like, you know, again, seeing articles and things in the paper that in my eyes puts a black eye on the town, it really saddens us as a board because, you know, we are trying to do our best up here and, you know, do we do everything right? No. But do we, do we do things for the right reasons because we want to make our town better? Yes. And everybody that works for us in our town, I think, is on the same page of that. That's why we're able to get a lot of stuff done right now. We're able to get a lot done because everybody's on the same mindset as we are, right? And they like to see things get done and they want to see their kids live here just as we enjoyed living here. And that's part of why we do this job. Trust me, it's not for politics, not at all. Do we have to get elected as politicians? Yes. That's the only time we talk politics, is the one time a year. Besides that, we don't ever talk politics. We talk about how to make the town better and that's all we do. So, you know, it saddens me that things are said about the town, but, you know, we'll get through this. Come on. There we go. All right. So now they had my one hour spiel. Business. Anybody want to discuss any other old business? Anybody? No. Is it business? I have to accept the tentative 2026 budget to discuss about it. It's just that we accept it from the town clerk. And from there, it's going to go to a polling. We're going to have a resolution to have a public hearing, which will be next meeting. So if anybody wants to come next week, come back. We have a public hearing on the budget for this year. I told you, we already got it under the cap, which is a good thing. But we just officially set the tentative 2026 budget.
I'll make the motion to accept the tentative 2026 budget.
All right.
So correspondence, I think I have one. So I got one correspondence and this is a similar request that we had last year. I think they had a very successful event. Dear members of the town board, I hope this letter finds you well. I am writing on behalf of the Marlboro Schools Girls JV Varsity Volleyball Teams to respectfully request a waiver reduction of the rental fee, the use of the community center for the upcoming end of the season banquet. Last year, we held our first annual banquet at the community center and it was a great success. The facility was an ideal setting for the event. The spacious layout, convenient location, ample parking tables and chairs, and available media equipment made it a comfortable and welcome environment for the athletes, families, and coaches that celebrated the season. We're hoping to host our banquet again this year and would love to return to the community center as a public school. Our budget is often constrained and allocating funds for rental fees can be a challenge. Our event is organized entirely by parent volunteers and funded through modest fundraising efforts. A waiver of the rental fee would greatly assist in us keeping us in celebration and afford accessible to all team families. We truly appreciate the town's support and youth athletes and community programs and we are hopeful that you will be considering the request. We are more than happy to provide additional information if needed to comply with the guidelines requirements set forth. Thank you for your consideration. And that's Julianne Floor, that's the banquet team parent. And they're asking for either November 22nd or December 6th, 5:00 PM. So I'm not sure if they cleared those dates with you yet, so. I mean, as long as the dates are available, you know, it's November 22nd or December 6th they're asking for.
Yeah, I'll make the motion pending the checking of the dates to waive the fee of the community center for the volleyball banquet, either November 22nd or December 6th.
I'll check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Actually, that's the only one I got.
We do have a report from the rec committee, if you want to do that now or during public comment.
The rec committee, come on up.
The committee reports are the second meeting of the month, but since I have such an audience tonight, I can't, you know, not speak and to the rec committee's horn a little bit. So first, it's wonderful to see such an overwhelming turnout tonight. I hope to see everybody in two weeks. The rec committee just recently assisted the Marlboro Milton Lions Club and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and a very successful youth fishing day on September 27th at the Cluett Shance Memorial Park. A huge thank you to Joe and Vanessa Micali, who really organized all the details. But as the board is aware, the rec committee raised funds through donations to stock the pond in advance of the fishing derby. There was 155 bluegill fish put in the back pond, which is Round Pond, and 40 largemouth bass. So I'd like to ask the board to consider putting up signage that says at Round Pond, it's a catch and release pond. If we can continue to grow the fish in the pond, then we'll have more fish for, you know, upcoming events and derbies, so please consider that. And while I have everybody, our trunk or treat event is October 25th from 3:30 to 5:30 at the Cluett Shance Memorial Park. To date, we have 41 trunks signed up, which is amazing, so thank you to everybody who signed up to participate. We still have the registration open and it closes on October 20th, so if anybody is interested in participating, that's still a live registration. Candy donations are being accepted at the town hall as well as the highway department and there's also an Amazon wishlist that you can find on Facebook as well as a Venmo account that you can send money to that will purchase candy. This event typically sees 1,000 kids, maybe even more. It's complete chaos in a good way. And then a special thank you to the Marlboro Police Department for partnering with us and not only having four trunks at the event, but they also do hot dogs for the kids, so thank you. And the final event I want to speak about that's coming up, last year, the rec committee decided that all these other towns in the community do these amazing Christmas parades, so we said, why not? Let's try it here in Marlboro. So on December 6th, we're going to have our second annual Christmas light parade. We also do a Christmas festival at the Cluett Shance Memorial Park from 4 to 6. The parade kicks off from Locust Grove at 5:30 and goes through the Hamlet of Milton and into the Cluett Shance Memorial Park. So not only do we need kids activity vendors during the Christmas festival at the park, but we also need anybody who's interested in decorating their car, their truck, their motorcycle tractor, bicycle tractor trailer. We do not discriminate, please sign up. And after the parade concludes at the park, we have the tree lighting, thank you to the highway department. We'll have music, we'll have some more, a new carpet, thank you again to the highway department and lots of family fun. So those are my reports. Thank you to everybody on the recreation committee. Again, it's all volunteer, we all have full-time jobs, so everybody that puts all these events together, we appreciate your time and your energy and your enthusiasm. Thank you so much.
Have you guys ever been to a trunk or treat or especially the winter festival that the last year, it was like, you never go to the Disney World and you see the electric parade at night, you know? It's kind of, that's what it reminded me of. All out, you know?
Let me tell you what, the banter on Facebook this week of different people trying to one-up each other ready for the parade is pretty, pretty exciting.
It's going to be exciting. Let's just hope it's freezing and snowing, that's all we wish. Great job by the rec committee, so.
And she's got flyers.
I have flyers, so I'm just going to.
She got flyers. All right, so a lot of people are here for some, they just ask everybody to please be respectful, that's all I don't say because that's why we're here. Come on up, listen. Because there are a lot of people here tonight. I don't usually go by our normal three minutes, but tonight, I think just because we have a lot of people, I want to really hold it to three minutes. So I don't know what you're here for.
Minette Bowman, I'm here again about the noise, the excessive noise that comes out of the garage bar and grill. There's a noise ordinance law in Marlboro of 65 decibels at any time. 65 is a normal conversation. Bands and DJs are well over 65. I've called, I've asked for decibel readings, I get the runaround. Did we have any decibel reading this weekend that I asked about?
We had three.
Okay, and what were they?
Eighty, seventy, and sixty-three.
Okay. So they're over, did they get citation?
They did not.
Why?
They gave them the lines.
Well, the law is the law, 65. There should be no bands, nothing over 65 coming from that place. It's been going on for a year and a half now and you still haven't done what the law says you're supposed to do and give them the citations.
The officer has discretion and they chose not to because they gave them the lines.
They're still telling people on the phone that this is a restaurant and they have till 11 o'clock at night. That just pisses me off when I'm calling because I've called several times and it seems like nobody there knows the town ordinance.
The officer is well aware.
Okay, well, because when I called back the second time, I was told by the guy that it's a restaurant, they have till 11:00 PM is what my officer told me when he came back.
They do have till 11:00 PM, it only exists until 11:00 PM, it goes to pick and drop.
Okay.
So I'm not exactly sure of the interpretation, but part of that is true. But they do have till 11:00 at 65.
Okay, so are we going to have to just continue to call?
Yes.
Okay, it's kind of ridiculous at this point.
They only act on complaints, right? Are they game compliant? If they're not going to comply or at some point will do anything, they're well aware of that personal conversation that night.
Because they didn't comply with you, they didn't stop the bands when you were there.
So what we can do is make them comply and they, noise over their voices.
And it wasn't.
But they did.
They didn't.
They did, so officer sat outside, they did.
I live right behind there, they did not. Because I heard the bands till 8:45 PM.
My officer was there at 8:12 and the band was breaking down.
Okay. Well, I will continue to call. I shouldn't have to when the law is the law of 65. I shouldn't have to call.
That's how we know there's complaints, we don't camp outside of places.
They shouldn't have bands. They shouldn't be allowed to have bands.
There is no state law that says I can enforce them not to have bands.
You can enforce the noise ordinance.
And we have been doing just that.
As usual.
All right.
Come on up, Laura.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laura Donovan. I'm a resident here in Milton. I also happen to be running for county legislator tonight, but tonight I am here as a taxpayer and a neighbor in this community. I'd like to ask the town board to help me and the community understand why early voting was moved last minute from the Marlboro Community Center, which had been listed on the Board of Elections website for weeks and yet at the 11th hour in mid-September, the Board of Elections was told there was a mix-up with the calendar, that there was no contract, and that early voting would not happen at the Marlboro Community Center this year. Dispersed the Board of Elections to move the early voting location abruptly and with little notice. And I'm concerned that this will confuse voters and make it more difficult for our seniors and our hard-working families to cast their ballots. Voting is a fundamental right for all citizens. As a graduate of Mount Holyoke College, which was the first women's college in the nation, hailing from a long line of women suffragettes who fought for the right to vote, I take voting rights extremely seriously and I would like to understand how this happened. Now, somebody said that moving early voting to Highland is not a big deal, that most people don't vote early anyway, Highland's not that far away. What I say is this, in a moment when people are looking for transparency, this is creating confusion. In a moment when people are working hard to just survive, this is making it harder for them to participate in their civic duty. In a moment where people are sick of elected officials blaming others, the town seems to be saying this was the Board of Elections' fault and potentially shrugging off any responsibility in this matter. As public servants, you serve the entire community and you shouldn't have dropped the ball on this issue. As one of only six early voting locations across Ulster County, most towns would be fighting to keep early voting in their town. So I want to ask the members of the board, were you aware that according to the town, no contract was put in place for early voting? Did no one think that that was important to follow up on and secure for our community? The Board of Elections had listed Marlboro for weeks throughout the summer into September. Did no one notice that? As elected officials, it is your job to fight for us, protect our rights, and be creative problem solvers when times call for it. In an effort for transparency, I'd like to ask the town to make all public, all communication that have happened between the Board of Elections, the town, and any legal communication that may have transpired between town attorneys and any other legal entities. I hope the town board does a thorough investigation into how this mix-up occurred and create processes to ensure that this never happens again.
Good evening, Ted Millar, also resident of Milton. Along the same, on the same topic that Laura was speaking about, I have three questions for the board. The first one is regarding early voting and the move to the Highland VFW. When did the entire town board discuss the decision to move the early voting site? Question two, was there a public vote to deny the use of the community center for early voting? And my third question is, why wasn't the Board of Elections notified? The town had rejected the community center site, but had to find out by word of mouth at a Republican event? That's all.
Can we respond to that? I mean, I think we should respond to that. So I can only speak on behalf of myself, Ted. The board did not vote to quote, reject early voting in Marlboro. I would love to have early voting in Marlboro. The Board of Elections did not hear at a Republican event. The Board of Elections was absolutely notified directly as soon as the miscommunication was identified. And what was the third question that you asked? Oh, also, I should clarify that the town of Marlboro didn't, doesn't have the authority to declare an early voting site. That's not our responsibility, that is the Board of Elections' responsibility. So we did not deny early voting here and we did not move it to Highland. Scott, you can elaborate on that if you want.
I would add something to that. If you're so concerned about this, did you contact John Quigley or that wasn't an option?
Yeah.
And what was his response?
Well, I have, I requested the documents and you guys all.
So what's the question here? If you contacted John Quigley, I'm sure he could elaborate on what happened.
Well, I'm asking the board.
We're asking you what John Quigley said.
Well.
He's the Board of Elections, yes or no? He's the guy that makes a decision, he's the guy that's supposed to follow up. Am I right or wrong? Excuse me?
I'm not going to speak for John.
Oh, you're not? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Look, I know this is a topic that some.
You have information in front of you from John Quigley and you're not going to answer for him. You're going to ask us, but you won't answer for him. Why? What's the big difference? If he gave you information, why can't you share with the public?
He isn't here to defend himself.
Defend himself what? It's a yes or no, he can tell you what actually happened. Why don't you share with the general public? I'd just like an answer. And I won't get one, of course. Thank you.
Look, we're here is trying to disenfranchise people from voting, not voting, denying the community center use.
How about this? Six places in Ulster County that you can vote and we've moved from Marlboro to Highland. It could have been moved somewhere else, way far away from Highland, but it was only moved to Highland. What is the problem? What makes? What makes us any better than the people in Highland? Now, we have to drive to Highland instead of Highland driving to Marlboro. What is the issue here? Let's get to the, let's get to the root of it, what is the issue?
The issue of disenfranchising the elderly population.
Well, I, I. Oh, okay. We won't provide transportation. We put it out there 100 times on social media, which we all know you love. What's the problem? You don't love it? Okay.
Look, look, Dave, we're not disenfranchised.
I'm sorry, Scott.
I know, I know.
You can defend the Walrus.
I know, but, look, we're better than that, okay? Because we did not deny anybody. Look, was there communications issues, was there not follow-up? Look, like I told you before, I'm a big boy, literally, big boy, but if there was mistakes on my part, I apologize. I talked to John Quigley personally, okay? Look, the Board of Elections has to secure their locations. We did not get a contract, they did not get a contract signed by the town of Marlboro. I did follow up with John Quigley when you were asking, why didn't we follow up? I did, multiple times, okay? Not just, and again, I called John. I'm not, again, emailing is one thing, calling someone on the phone and saying, hey, what the heck's going on, is how I roll, okay? I call people, all right? John and his counterpart didn't agree on the cost of what the community center, I told you, it costs $3,000 a month to run the community center without.
So, it's an electric.
Being there nine days straight, okay? Nine days straight means you're going to use more electric, you're going to use more of the facility, I have to have someone come in every single day and clean it, so you're talking the $3,000, now it could probably be $6,000. We, the taxpayers of the town of Marlboro, pay the county and the Board of Elections tax dollars every year to have these elections. It's my job and this board's job to get as many tax dollars back from the county into our community to help us. So, when I negotiate with the Board of Elections to try to get money back for rental, it's not to deny people voting power, we had an agreement with John. We thought we had an agreement with John for the $4,000. He said, yes, you have his email, he said what he said. He said his counterpart would not agree to the $4,000. Then they came up with the formula based on other people's rentals, which he said in the paper says they don't pay, so I had to come up with other people's rentals, a formula if they don't pay. That, to me, is a little strange. He also said, which you have in the email, that the contract I'm sending you is for the general election only, this is not for the early election, that will come at a later time. The email that you have states that. That contract never came. I phoned him, phone conversation, John, are you sending, I can't get my counterpart to agree to the cost. I said, okay, John, we want to help out, can you at least get this, and you see my last email, which I sent him the email to confirm after our conversation, can you at least get this $29.50? Look, I feel like it's like, that's my job, I have to negotiate. I sent that email to him, he never followed up. Colleen, who's the head of the election, believe it or not, it's not the town board, okay, the town board just does the rental fee. All of the Board of Election goes through the town clerk's office, okay? I don't know if people understand that, it doesn't go through the town board, it goes through the Board of Elections with the town clerk, all right? The only thing we're involved with is what is the rental fee or the use for the facility? That's when we get involved, okay? I sent him the email, Colleen followed back up and, hey, John, you didn't respond to Supervisor Corcoran's request. I called him on the phone again, John, are you going to, nothing. So, when does it come to a point to say, we're giving these people the Board of Elections almost $100,000 each a year? Okay? When does it come to a point that it's irresponsible? I'll take responsibility if I messed up, and I told John I had a conversation with him today. We're more than happy to have people come to the town of Marlboro and vote. I had the voter, we had 2,500 people vote in Marlboro last election, and I could tell you the breakdown. If you thought we were doing it for political reasons, why would we? Because last election, more Republicans than conservatives voted in Marlboro than Democrats, okay? I got the breakdown right here in front of me. So, if we're trying to dissent, we're trying to do it for political reasons, which I think where you're going with with this, you're totally wrong. You're totally wrong. There's only six polling sites in the whole county. So, are you seeing Platico's disenfranchised, Gardner's disenfranchised, you know, was Highland disenfranchised if they had to come to Marlboro? I mean, come on, we're better than this. We're better than this as a community, we're better than this as two parties that are going to run an office. Come on, nobody up here is denying anybody that wants to vote, we want everybody to vote, okay? And we already had conversations with John and the Board of Elections to say, we will preemptively do it this year if you want to, okay? So, we get this out of the way early. So, next year, or the, you know, because next year, there's going to be an election, everybody doesn't know that, that elections are being changed in New York State. Every election now is going to have to be on a presidential election or a governor election, which means our election, so my term, if it doesn't get extended to four years, which we have on the ballot right now for the supervisor, which is the only position that's only two years, it's not four, everybody else in the town is four, if that doesn't get extended to four years this year, that means I got to run again next year, all right? The same thing with legislators and all those people, anybody has a two-year term. Anybody that's running this year as a council member only gets three years. Their term's going to be cut by one year, because then they have to run on the presidential, which is going to be good for all us taxpayers, right? The idea behind this is to save money, you only have less elections, because elections cost a lot of money and they waste a lot of our tax dollars. So, I agree with that. But, look, all I could tell you, yeah, we're not trying to disenfranchise anyone. Anybody wants a ride, call any of us. I know Laura's also doing something as far as helping seniors go too. Call her, call Laura, all right? She'll help you, we'll all help you. But, I'm just saying, I don't think anybody was walking to the community center, so everybody was driving to the community center. So, if it's another 10 minutes, I know it's a little inconvenient.
Scott, I got to interrupt.
But, I don't think it's horrible.
Let me just reiterate another fact. We just wasted everybody 10 minutes of time here, because Mr. Millar's an intelligent guy, we know that, these are answers you already knew. He's just trying to trip us up up here, that's all it is, it's, this whole thing is ridiculous. Just so everybody in the public knows that. This is not, these are not quite, you could have gone on social media and got all these answers for two weeks now, this has been an ongoing thing, everybody in here knows that. We're going to bring it to a public meeting and they're going to put us on the spot like we're a bunch of idiots.
All right, next up, who wants to come up? I don't know if Patty or, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Ellis Graham, and I've been a Marlboro resident for the last nine years. I'm a retired social studies teacher and currently serve as an elections inspector in Ulster County, something that I've done since I've been here. And I know we're all aware that voting in elections is a critical responsibility for citizens living in a democracy. Voters get a chance to choose their local, state, and national leaders and vote on referendums on issues affecting their lives. In order to facilitate this crucial function, local governments are obligated at reasonable cost to provide community space so citizens from all political parties can exercise their right, which is protected by New York State law. Now, many townships make their public spaces available voting for free of charge, and while I know there are expenses in this case, as, you know, and I was nice to hear the support for the kids from the soccer team and getting their ability to have their party without cost, but I also think because voting is really, really critical for every citizen in Marlboro and in Milton, we ought to do as much as we can, instead of trying to wring more money from the county to be able to make the community space available at the community center, which, by the way, was built with public funds, we ought to be able to utilize that. We're wealthy enough and we're good enough to be able to make that available. And I know that the voting now will take place in Milton, I've actually voted in Milton myself, there really is a tough comparison between the sites. This is easily accessible, there is no road going down, it's a little bit easier. So, for early voters, for people like seniors with disabilities, and on people with varying work schedules, and mothers with children, it gives them an opportunity to be able to, you know, to be able to make things most convenient. So, I hope that in this discussion, we can go forward and realize that we all have an obligation and an opportunity to provide the best possible things for our community. You guys had wonderful videos about all the work that the highway department has done and the water department to make this place a great place to live, and we agree with that. So, let's just try to remember that when it comes to the issue of voting, we all need to know and realize it's the most important thing we do as community members when it comes to electing members to the town board. So, I just want to say again, thank you for all of the work that's been done, and let's just come together and realize the importance of doing the right thing. Thank you.
I agree with you. I appreciate it. I just want to also, you know, the community center is your polling site if you're in Milton for Election Day. We never have, never will, we do not charge for Election Day, that is part of the law of giving a space up for your community. And if you're in Milton, check your local, you should have a card from the Board of Elections, but basically, if you live in Milton, you're voting at the community center. If you live in Marlboro, you're still voting at St. Mary's Hall, so, but double-check your Board of Election card. Patty, go ahead, Patty.
Patricia Hadeaway, Town of Marlboro. So, Scott, I've known you for a while, I know that you really wanted to be supervisor, and I know how important that was to you. And I'm just wondering why you didn't fight harder for us to keep early voting. And you've said some things tonight, so, okay, that's great. Okay, however, you all seem, or some of you seem, a little defensive, and how dare we ask these questions?
I'm not defensive at all, Patty. I'm not defensive at all, I just, anybody could ask any questions you want.
Oh, you mean me, you mean me, I'm being defensive.
Go ahead, Patty, go ahead. I apologize for interrupting, go ahead.
What I want to say is knowing the history, knowing that some people sitting here were not, didn't want the community center, we had to fight so hard to get it, knowing there's other things that we've had to fight so hard to get, and knowing the climate, we'll say the political climate, I don't know what you want to call it right now, it does sort of look away. All of a sudden, now we don't have early voting here, but I'm not hearing that this board worked really hard to try to solve that problem, and it does bring people into our town. They can stay and spend money, assuming, you know, they can find parking, but it was a draw. I was so happy last year to see and have friends and family come down, and I'm just not hearing, and I didn't hear prior to this meeting, why? And you talk about transparency, and then you, people scoff sometimes when we use that word. We don't know, and I don't have Ted's email, I didn't talk to anybody at the board, I just want to have a chance to express that, and we have people who have a lot of questions about where things happen, and we don't feel like we get good answers, and you can mock me for that, but I'm not the only one who came here tonight with questions, it looks away. So, you can say, well, don't talk about my brother, and don't talk about Colleen or anything, and that's great, but those questions, when you stay there, who's responsible for not having early voting and how that happened? So, that's what I want to say. I'm just putting out you have a lot of questions, and I don't think that you've done a great job of answering them preemptively before tonight.
All right, I appreciate that. I never said, don't talk about my brother or Colleen, I said, you can say whatever you want, I said, I just can't participate. I think that's what I said, so, if I didn't say that, that's what I'm saying, as the first thing with the election, I don't know much more, we could talk about. The mistakes of the world, okay, the, the, this happened, you could, you want to say, maybe I should have done something different, you can't go back, and as soon as we found out that there was this, that we didn't try to solve the problem, like.
Patty, I think if I've been here, I think, you know, some of the, what you're interpreting to be defensiveness has to do with the fact that the question's been asked on Facebook about 45 times in the last two weeks, and I personally have done my absolute best to try to be extremely transparent, very patient, and very thorough in explaining to people exactly what did happen. I think the answer here is that it was a really crappy breakdown in process, and it's something that frankly, we all need to learn from and to implement a better process going forward, but it was an unfortunate breakdown in the communications process, and I do think that we have tried now numerous times to answer that question for people, and I'm not sure if it's, if we're not communicating clearly, or if you just don't want to accept that answer, but the question just keeps coming back in the same way. So, if it feels a little defensive, it's probably just because we've answered this now numerous, numerous times, but it, you know, again, to reiterate Scott's point, nobody here benefits from this voting not being in Marlboro, certainly, least of all, those of us that are on the ballot, we do not benefit from this. So, it's a very unfortunate situation, but all we can say at this point is, is that we are working very hard to try to rectify the process going forward so that there is not a miscommunication, but there was absolutely a breakdown and a dropping of the ball in closing the loop and giving a contract to the town, and we are going to pay the price. Frankly, Manny and I'll pay the price, you know, we are the ones that are going to suffer from this, but I hope at this point, the question has now been answered enough times in enough different forums that we can put that one to bed and move on.
Yeah, I think, and I agree. You know, I'm a person who learns from your mistakes, I think you really got to learn from mistakes that happen, and you build off it, right? And you say, look, I'm going to do better next time, look, none of us are perfect, Patty. You know, and you, I'm just, you know, and we're trying to answer everybody's questions as best we can. Yes, do we have information that maybe the public wants? Yeah, come and ask us, I mean, we're not hiding anything. I'm just not a person, and I hate to go on the Facebook page, you know, when I do go on there, it's probably the last thing I want to do.
It's not a very rewarding experience.
Yeah, I just don't like it, because it's not personal to me, because sometimes when you take something, it's not the way you really, you know, come off as saying it, right? Sometimes it comes off in a different way, and you might take it as, I'm being defensive, or I'm being arrogant, or I'm being whatever, but it's not. Like, if you know me, that's not me, okay? That's not me. I think that's what it, there's a lot of people here tonight probably supporting us because they know that's not me. Because if you're looking on the other side and you see certain things happening, you have to question it, and that's your right, and I think you should question it, you know? It was my brother, it's not my brother, you should question things, but I have to recuse myself for many of that, you know? I know that when I got involved with this, like, my brother was working here before I got elected, okay? I got elected, remember that. People keep saying that there's too many of us here, as far as my family. Well, I got elected to this job, okay? I didn't just get appointed to this job, you people elected me to this job. Right? My sister-in-law got elected to her job, and my brother got elected to his job at the legislature. Look, no one got appointed here, the public put us here. We're just trying to do our duty, if we're, in a small town, in a small town, you do have certain people that do certain things, and we have a lot of great families in our town that do a lot of great things. And, you know, we chose to run for office and support our town in that way. There's other people that support their town by, you know, doing Marlboro youth football, or they do baseball, or they do basketball, or whatever, you know? There's so many great organizations in our town that do a lot of great things, but this is what we chose. So, you know, I hate that they, people say that, you know, there's nepotism, it's like, look, we got voted in, okay? We weren't appointed to these positions, and that's all I'm going to say. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Before I start, Sherida, thank you. You've been awesome.
Thank you.
My name is Meg Thompson. I've lived in Marlborough for 15 years, and I care deeply for this community. I'm here despite the fear of retaliation. I know the rumors, and we are all saddened too. But we're, our community is saddened by the actions and the theft that were in the news, not that the news came to light. That's what we're upset about. So I'm seeking tonight to again urge the board to demand the resignation of Mr. Thomas Corcoran from his appointed role as Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer. I also urge the board to engage in the Office of the State Comptroller to conduct an audit of town operations. Over the past months, credible reports have alleged corruption, intimidation, and misuse of authority within the Building Department and personally by Mr. Corcoran. These include accusations of embezzlement and mismanaged funds from Marlborough Youth Football and Cheer, as well as threats made toward residents who spoke critically of town officials. I am submitting with my letter copies of the cease and desist letters that include the threats I referenced, as well as the referral to the Attorney General for the alleged embezzlement and corruption. I am also including a copy of our petition with over 100 signatures supporting this request. I know Tom personally. I volunteered alongside him, and we were friends. I believe he's a good person who has done good things for this town. But being part of this town's history does not mean being exempt from accountability. Good people can make serious mistakes, and public confidence is broken. Continuing to serve in a position of authority no longer makes sense. This scandal overshadows the honest work being done every day by all of you, literally all of you. Our roads are safe, and our parks are clean, the trash is picked up by people, like, people on this board, by you guys and your families, pick up the trash in our parks. All of that work is being overshadowed by this scandal. Your efforts are what make Marlborough strong, yet that good is being buried under this controversy and this mistrust. I believe in Marlborough's better nature, I believe in integrity, transparency, and fairness, and I believe those values still define the people sitting in this room. I respectfully ask the town board to demand Mr. Corcoran's resignation and to invite the Office of the State Comptroller to conduct an independent audit of town operations. Thank you for your time and your continued service to this community.
Meg, I'm going to respond to you quickly on a couple of things. There's been a lot of controversy, it seems, this week on Facebook related to, as Scott mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the different law firms that are being voted on in our resolutions tonight, particularly the law firm that is being brought on to advise us on this personnel issue. And there were limited things that we could say online on Facebook, you know, until your letter was written to the public, but there seems to be a miscommunication or a misinterpretation, I'll say, for how people are reading that resolution. I think you can all probably understand or sympathize in your day-to-day jobs that you can't just fire someone or demand someone's resignation without consulting with HR, without consulting with legal, and making sure your i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And to be clear, I am not saying that we are making that demand either way, but you can't do that without due diligence, and you can't do that without following a legal process. And so the reason that the resolution is on the docket tonight, Resolution 83, to authorize the law firm of Thomas Drohan Waxman Pettigrew &amp; Meili LLP, is to advise this board on what legal steps need to be followed to properly investigate the issue and take whatever necessary action comes out of that investigation. The town board cannot action anything that you're requesting in your letter until we have that legal advice in hand. So that is why the resolution is on the docket tonight. It seems to be, you know, very provocative to many people online, believing that that law firm is in some way going to defend Mr. Corcoran. And I just want to make it clear to the public that that law firm is being brought on to advise this board on how to follow the correct legal process to make sure that we do not get the town of Marlborough in more trouble, or get the town of Marlborough sued, or, you know, have, create additional issues. So I think it's important that everybody be clear on that. If there are additional comments, we're happy to listen to them, but this law firm in Resolution 83 is in direct response to your letter, which you provided to us in advance of this meeting, and will allow the town board to pursue the issue in a legal fashion.
My name is Jenna Lazraff, and I reside in Milton. I stand before you tonight because I care deeply about this community, the same community that raised me, supported me, and shaped the person I am today. And it's because of that love for the town of Marlborough that I feel compelled to speak about the allegations against Scott and Tommy Corcoran. These men have been the backbone of this town for years. When there's a fundraiser, they're there. When a neighbor needs help, they're there. When the community calls, they show up, not for recognition, not for applause, but because they truly care about the people who live here. It's easy to throw stones to spread rumors or to make assumptions, but before we do that, we need to take a step back and look at the full picture. At the countless hours they've spent helping others, at the projects they have supported, at the good they've done without ever expecting anything in return. I've seen firsthand the kind of people Scott and Tommy are, hardworking, generous, and deeply invested in the well-being of the town of Marlborough. They have gone above and beyond time and time again, not because they had to, but because they wanted to make our town better for all of us. So tonight, I'm asking everyone here to think carefully before joining in judgment. Let's not forget the years of service, the countless acts of kindness, and the difference these men have made in so many lives. At the end of the day, this isn't just about allegations, it's about remembering who we are as a community, one that stands together, supports one another, and believes in fairness, truth, and gratitude. And I'll end with this, before you point fingers, before you pass judgment, ask yourself, what have you done for this community? Thank you.
My name is Katie Wallace, and I'm proud resident of Milton. I'm here tonight not because it is easy, but because it is necessary. I understand the risk of speaking out, the fear of retaliation, of backlash, even of social or professional consequences. But as a member of this community and as a parent, I believe it is my duty to stand up for what is right and what is just. Over the last eight months, the good work of this town board has been overshadowed by one individual's abuse of power, Thomas Corcoran. I recognize that Mr. Corcoran and his family have deep roots and strong support in Marlborough. As one resident said, these people need to realize who built Marlborough. But being part of this town's history should not give anyone immunity from accountability. I can only imagine a few reasons why people continue to overlook the facts. Some may be complicit, benefit from the same network of influence. Others may stay silent out of fear that speaking out might lead to retaliation, stalled property matters, or even consequences for their own children in school. And some may simply not want to believe it is true. But denial does not erase wrongdoing. Here are the facts. Mr. Corcoran publicly stated multiple times that Marlborough Youth Football and Cheer was a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. No such record exists. Yet, he still issued letters claiming that donations were 100% tax deductible. In March, he admitted, "I did not balance the checkbook, to be quite honest with you." Then in July, he told a reporter that he handed in his treasures report for 2024. That is false. I was present. What actually happened was he handed a check to the new treasurer and said he closed the account because it was a personal account. If this were truly a 501(c)(3), there would be formal transfer of records, funds, and accountability. That never occurred. Mr. Corcoran also admitted he never kept a ledger, something every treasurer is required to maintain. Mr. Corcoran's actions are a clear breach of responsibility. He failed the children, parents, and volunteers who trusted him. He failed this community. So I ask you, is this the kind of person we want representing Marlborough? Someone who misused funds meant for our youth programs and then tried to cover it up? Accountability is not about revenge, it is about integrity. If we want to move forward as a community built on honesty and trust, then accountability must come first. I urge this board to stand firm in your commitment to transparency and fairness. Do not allow one person's abuse of power to continue overshadowing the good work you are trying to do for Marlborough. For the sake of the children, for the sake of this town's reputation, and for the sake of what is right, I respectfully call for the board to demand Mr. Corcoran's resignation from all positions he holds, but specifically those within this town. As Councilwoman Shesha explained, they do have to go through legal parameters, which I understand, but I do ask that you support the concerns and the witnessing of what some of us have endured due to Mr. Corcoran. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mary Beth?
This is really a sad day. So my name's Mary Beth King. My name's Mary Beth King. I live in Milton, New York, and I would like to speak to Resolution 82 tonight. Resolution 82 indicates Matthew Drake is to be appointed to the full-time position of Code Enforcement Officer. At the February 26-24, 2024 Town Board Meeting, Resolution Number 32, to appoint a part-time Building Inspector I, was unanimously approved. The minutes of that meeting state, and I quote, "He," meaning Tom Corcoran, "is planning to retire in two years and plans to stay with the town part-time to continue to train Mr. Drake." Mr. Corcoran explained that the Building Inspector is a community service position that doesn't pay well, so it's hard to find someone. There was an ad placed, and no one had applied. He had known Mr. Drake for many years and feels he will be a great fit for the job, end of quote. Matthew Drake had graduated from high school 21, 20 months prior to this resolution. At present, he is currently the part-time Building Inspector, or, excuse me, part-time Building Code Enforcer, and he is currently the assistant football coach for the varsity football team. It does not appear that Mr. Drake meets the criterias as defined in the Town of Marlborough's Code 67-3, Section B. Nor does he meet the New York State criteria for a Code Enforcement Officer, including an associate's degree in a related field and at least one year of full-time paid experience in building inspection or construction. Number two, completion of a six-course Code Enforcement Official Basic Training Program. Number three, completion of 24 hours of in-service training annually, including specific hours in Code Enforcement and Administration, the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, and the Energy Conservation Construction Code. And lastly, number four, to successfully pass the Code Enforcement Official Exam. Is it that we have a resolution before us to appoint an unqualified individual for a Code Enforcement Officer?
So do you know for the last year, Mr. Drake has been going to all the classes and got a certification and don't, do you know this? Or are you just talking off the top of your head tonight?
I'm willing to stand corrected.
Okay. Has he not worked for us for a year, getting his...
Part-time.
Okay. And is he going to get part-full-time so he could get those years, so he'll have a year with the Code Enforcement Officer? So you're standing up there, look, and I love you, Mary Beth, you know this.
I know that.
But I had a young, look, you had your three minutes. No, you had your three minutes. You had your three minutes, now I'm going to answer your, I'm going to answer you.
Okay.
Okay? Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. You stood up there and stated stuff that I, it's part of the code, agreeable. The gentleman is a young gentleman that, thank God almighty, we were able to recruit to come into this job, okay? He is going to take one year of full-time training, okay, with the current officer, right, to get his qualifications. He went to school for his degree, graduated college, and then went to school every night as a part-time Code Enforcement Officer, getting all his credentials to be a Code Enforcement Officer, passed the certification test, and that's why he's getting hired, because he actually just passed his certification test. But you're standing up there like you know that he didn't do any of these things.
No, I am standing here to be corrected, which I am. I am being corrected, but I also...
And you could have easily picked up the phone, called me, and asked me this before the meeting.
Okay.
But of course, you want to stand up there and make a point that we're trying to do something wrong.
I stand corrected.
I'm just trying to say, I'm just trying to let everybody understand. This gentleman does have his certifications, this gentleman is doing the right thing, and we are lucky to be able to have him come into our community at such a young age and take this job, which we know is not the greatest job, all right? It's a tough job, right? And he took the time after he graduated college to work part-time with us and go back to school and get all his certifications, and you're standing there disqualifying him. Do you understand how hard it is to get employees in municipal jobs today? And go to a supervisors' meeting every month, and they are crying because they cannot find employees to work in these jobs. Do you understand what these people get paid? This gentleman's making $40,000 a year as a full-time Code Enfor, can you survive on $40,000 a year in the town of Marlborough right now? I don't think so. Okay, so we're trying to get him in at an entry level, so eventually he can work his way up and take the full job on, okay? The only way you do that is you get him into a full-time position now, and he trains for a full year, and he gets more experience. I'm more of the person, you get more experience by working on the job, right? You could read a book all day, all right? And this job, there's one book he has to really know, and that's the Town of Marlborough Code Book, right? And I could tell you, for the last year, he's been reading that book probably 20 times, inside and out. So I'm only taking offense, and you know how I love you.
I hear what you're saying.
Because you're offending a new full-time employee, and I defend my employees 100%, okay?
And I would simply, I would simply... Ask, as a new Code Enforcement Officer, who his supervision will be done by?
The current Code Enforcement Officer, of course.
And that is, that is in question. I mean, that, so...
But do we also live in America?
Yep, we do.
Okay, does that mean that someone's innocent until they're proven guilty?
I also want to respond to your comments about Facebook. I, whether you reply on Facebook or add into that, there is a difference between responding in a public forum at a public meeting than there is on Facebook. And so I appreciate that you did respond on Facebook, but here is where it needed to be, and thank you very much.
Yeah, I respond every time. You come to all of them. Look, you're one of five that come every now, every meeting. Trust me, I appreciate you and everything you've done. I just, you know, that's one thing that gets me a little...
I get it too, but we've responded to the exact same...
I get it too, but we've responded to the exact same person on Facebook and in this room, and also have encouraged many people all week long to pick up the phone, talk to us, we'll talk through it. There's no shortage of information and there's no shortage of communication here if you're willing to come off anonymous and call us and talk to us.
Here's the other man. What's going on, my friend? I know she should introduce you. Well, another thing is, why aren't you sitting next to your wife, Dan?
Uh, okay, I don't talk about it. I can see somebody give the hell out of their media and I don't want to do that. People take aim or something.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is a simple request. Daniel King, Milton, regard to Resolution 85. I ask that the proposed budget, I'm sorry, be included as a link on the town website to promote transparency and community, I'm sorry, engagement. The current practice of reviewing the printed budget at the town hall is a detriment to community participation.
That's always what we do, as we, tonight's the first step. Once it gets accepted by the board, then it gets put on the website.
I'll come and help you if you need my help.
Yeah. No, it's not, Daniel takes good care of that, so, yeah, but we.
We are the 21st century.
We have to accept it first, and then once the board accepts the tentative, then it can be put on the website. So right now, it's kinda just a document that has no meaning until we do that, so, but that's absolutely what we do every, every year, they're put out there, so. Anybody else? Mickey, you already had a comment, didn't you? Okay, come on in.
Public hearing.
I am gonna take a deep breath and make sure that the arrows stop flying. This is just comments on the three law firms to address the someplace upstate issue, Resolutions 86, 87, and 88.
Only 86 and 87.
Excuse me?
Only 86 and 87. 88 is simply the 2026 agreement for our general counsel of Van de Water and Van de Water.
And it says that they will continue to be co-counsel on 86 and 87, which is part of my question.
Okay.
Comment, I should say. This issue has created a lot of discussion and caused a lot of anguish for many people in this town. Besides the location in question, which is not seeing their business plan come to light, multiple farms and wineries that have nothing to do with this issue have had to come to terms with cease and desist letters. The Town Board has previously approved spending money for an attorney to represent the town in this matter, and now it seems that because the town's previously-employed town attorney cannot represent both the town and the zoning board of appeals in this specific matter, you, the Town Board, must now hire another firm. While that is understandable, why would Van de Water and Van de Water still be held as lead counsel in this situation? And why doesn't the zoning board of appeals have access to their own attorney for all matters as a standard? Is the planning board also represented by the same firm of Van de Water per Resolution 88? If so, the board might be well-advised to think that decision to avoid future conflicts of interest, but also to allow these individual boards their own representation as a standard practice. Both of these boards have been defended at previous meetings for deciding how their meetings will be conducted without microphones and without filming. They should at least be entitled to their own legal representation as a matter of course. Those board members are appointed and do not have the benefit of law degrees as a qualification to serve. If there's a conflict that arises between their decisions and what the Town Board thinks should be done, will we find ourselves triple billing again? Taxpayers do not want to see that. So, follow-up question. Can you give the public an idea of how much this has already cost the taxpayers, and what is the estimated cost to settle the someplace upstate issue? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Again, this is, this is in full litigation. It's been going on for two years, so we can't really speak to this matter. You guys have to understand that when we, we're trying to protect you and us as, as a town entity. I can tell you that, yes, we are hiring attorneys, not because we want to hire attorneys, because we don't want to have conflicts, because if you have any, if you have a conflict in any of these, it can, it could cause the case to get thrown out, right? So in order to avoid that, you have to hire a separate attorney. The costs are in line with what we would pay Van de Water, Van de Water, so there's no extra cost when you say that we're gonna double bill or something like that. They're, they're just the representative, the ZBA, just as Van de Water. Why do we use Van de Water? Van de Water has been our attorneys for, ever since I've been here. We use them for pretty much all our attorney questions. In this case, we don't, they don't actually do, you know, for the other resolutions, they don't do, for personnel reasons, they don't do that type of litigation, so that's why we, and it was recommended by Van de Water, Van de Water, who we should reach out to, and I gave those, gave that information to the Town Board and said, you know, I don't want to be copied on this, I don't want to have any conversations with this, but I had to give them that information, and from there, who stepped in, and Councilwoman Sessa stepped in and are taking that part on. But from there, it's again, we're in the middle of two-year litigation, and all I could tell you, and cost-wise, it's been costing quite a bit of money, and I could tell you it's gonna cost a lot more money of our tax dollars, unfortunately, that none of us up here, none of us want to spend at all. We just want people to comply with our codes, right? And we're, we're trying our best for that to happen, that's all. But again, I can't really say much more than that, because we're in litigation and, you know, so I apologize that I can't say more on that, but yeah. Anybody else? Okay, and then I'm gonna close the public comment session. If people want to stay, they can stay. If people would like to leave at this point, I'll take a five-minute break, and they can leave, and then we'll get to our resolutions. So I'll take a five-minute break.
This is like the social event of the year.
I'm like, I just go through it. Oh, I'm so thirsty. This is, this is, this is, this is Matthew Drake has been working part-time at the police department since March of 2024. Matthew Drake appointed as a full-time code enforcement officer immediately and moves for its adoption.
Council member, Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And congratulations to Matt, he's gonna make a good court enforcement officer.
Tom?
He treats the law firm of Thomas Drone Waxman Pettigrew male LLP to provide legal services to the town in connection with personnel matters. Mr. Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the town recognizes the need to provide the town of Marlboro pertaining to labor issues with legal counsel. And whereas the Town Board has reviewed the engagement agreement dated October 7, 2025 from the law firm of Thomas Drone Waxman Pettigrew male LLP and provide legal services to the Town of Marlboro, and whereas the Town Board finds it to be in the best interest of the town to retain labor counsel to advise and represent the Town of Marlboro in connection with personnel matters. Now therefore, we resolve that the Town Board, the Town of Marlboro hereby authorize the retention of Thomas Drone Waxman Pettigrew male LLP dated October 7, 2025 to provide legal services to the Town of Marlboro in connection with personnel matters. And before the, uh, resolve that the Town Supervisors authorize to execute the agreement, engagement agreement with Thomas Drone Waxman Pettigrew male LLP, and take all necessary actions to effectively execute the retention of counsel and payment of fees and expenses provided where herein then. Before I move forward, of course, I'm gonna recuse myself from this resolution, so there is already my answer to that, so, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yeah, I'm just gonna also say that we answered some questions this week about this law firm. They, they bill on the quarter hour, so they bill 15-minute increments, and they do provide a full accounting of exactly what was done during that time, and the Town Board and I will all have visibility to that, as well as Deputy Supervisor Appler. So given that, yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yeah, I'd also like to add to that, just to reiterate, to provide legal services to the Town of Marlboro in connection with personnel matters, EL, not personnel matters, AL, and, uh, yes.
Thank you. And this is the personnel agreement. Again, if anybody wants to review this, these will be online in our minutes, and it's actually on our agenda right now, you can pull it up. October 14, 2025, Resolution 84, to appoint a part-time police dispatcher. Supervisor Corcoran follows the following, whereas the Town of Marlboro Police Department has an open position for a part-time police dispatcher, and it is the recommendation of the Chief of Police to appoint Molly Erickson to be, it resolved that Molly Erickson be appointed effective immediately and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes, and thank you, Molly, for stepping up. That's a tough position. Uh, Resolution 85, to hold a public hearing on the 2026 budget. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, it resolved that, with that consistent with the Town Law Section 8, a public hearing on the, on the 2026 budget will be held on October 27, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. in this room, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 86, to authorize retention of conflict and use counsel for the zoning board of appeals. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following, whereas the Town Board, the Town of Marlboro, the Town Board recognizes the need to provide the Town of Marlboro zoning board of appeals ZBA with independent legal counsel in connection with the appeal before the ZBA involved in property SBL 109.1-4-56.100 and 109.1-4-57 and 109.1-4-58. And whereas the Town Board has reviewed the engagement agreement dated September 16, 2025 from the law firm, Robin Cale and Ampel Palado LP by Victoria L. Palado Esquire to provide legal services to the ZBA on as-needed basis, including representation in litigation related to decisions of the ZBA, and whereas the Town Board finds it to be in the best interest of the town to retain special counsel to advise and represent the ZBA in connection with the matter as, on as-needed basis, including representation and allegation related to the decision of the ZBA and any related proceedings. Now therefore, we resolve that the Town Board, the Town Board hereby authorize the retention of Robin Cale and Ampel Palado LP, except for an engagement agreement dated September 16, 2025, and provide legal services to the Town of Marlboro zoning board of appeals in connection with the appeal for the matter and any related proceedings. And therefore, we resolve that the Town Board Supervisors authorize to execute the engagement agreement with them, with Robin Cale, Ampel, Palado, LP. Man, they repeat themselves. And take all necessary actions and effective in retention of counsel and payment of fees and expenses as provided therein, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yeah, again, on this one, you know, because there were a lot of questions this week on law firms, just for clarity's sake, this is bringing in an independent legal counsel for the zoning board, so there is no conflict of interest between the zoning board applicant and the impending, well, the pending litigation with that same applicant. So the attorneys are separate, unbiased, it's out of an interest of fairness to the applicant.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes, thank you. And again, there's the agreement, which I'll sign.
We should find a law firm with a more complicated name next time.
You know, these legal documents are crazy, but they are here to protect us, so. Resolution 87, to retain Adam Leclerc LP as co-counsel. I'm just clarifying this too, this is not that our current counsel can't keep representing us, they will be representing us, but there's so many documents that the applicant There's so many documents that the applicant is asking for that it's just a lot of work. Like, you know, I just tell you today, there was a request for a thousand documents, right? So it's a lot of work. So we need to bring on extra counsel to, to help us with that. This is why this was brought upon. Again, it wasn't that our current counsel from Van de Water couldn't do it. Yes, no, we cannot. I'm sorry, that was public hearing. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Where's the town board of the town is currently engaged in litigation captioned by Town Board of someplace upstate LLC. And index number EF2025-851865. Pending Supreme Court of the State of New York, County of Ulster, the litigation. And where's the town is presently presented by Van de Water and Van de Water, L.L.P. and is primary litigation counsel in this matter. And with the term that the town's interests will be best served by engaging additional counsel with specific experience and resources to assist in the prosecution and defense of issues arising in the litigation. And where's the town is reviewed and received the proposed engagement letter from Adam Leclerc, L.L.P., dated September 30, 2025, outlining the terms and conditions under which Adam Leclerc, L.L.P., will provide litigation support and lay in legal services in connection with the litigation, including hourly billing arrangements and expense terms as more fully set forth in the engagement letter. And therefore, it is resolved that the town of Marlborough hereby retain and engage the law firm, Adam Leclerc, L.L.P., as co-counsel to Van de Water and Van de Water, L.L.P., to represent and assist the town in connection with the matter of the town of Marlborough versus someplace upstate LLC, ETAL index number EF2025-1865, upon the terms and conditions set forth in the engagement letter submitted by Adam Leclerc, L.L.P. And therefore, it is resolved that the supervisor of the town of Marlborough is hereby authorized to execute the engagement letter with Adam Leclerc, L.L.P. and substantially the form presented to the town and take such other and further action as may be necessary and appropriate to, what's that saying? Effectuate the, oh, okay, the retention. And be it further resolved that Van de Water and Van de Water, L.L.P. shall continue as the town lead counsel in the matter and shall coordinate with Adam Leclerc, L.L.P. to ensure efficient and effective representation of the town interests. And be it further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And again, all these people that we hire, we don't take lightly. We really do not like spending money, taxpayer money, on these things. I could honestly tell you that. Resolution 88, to authorize the supervisor to sign the 2026 engagement agreement with the town attorney, Van de Water, Van de Water. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. It is resolved that the town board, the town Marlborough, authorize the town supervisor to sign the attachment agreement from town attorney, Van de Water, Van de Water, for 202026, and moves for its adoption.
Councilmember Sessa?
Yes.
Councilmember Kauki?
Yes.
Councilmember Zambito?
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran?
Yes. And this is the yearly, we get a contract every year from them and we have to renew it every year. And that's why this is here. And that's it. So Manny, it's your time.
All right, it's 9:16. I was very well to see the community come out for the occasion of, I hope that a lot of answers, a lot of questions were answered. And make a motions to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience.